Good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, September 1st, 2021 at 8:00 a.m. via go-to meeting. At this point, we will ask Dennis to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dennis, we will now move on to item number two, which is visitors. Are there any visitors on the meeting that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors that would like to be recognized?
Good morning. It's Christine Gupiel. I have my camera off. I'm having technology issues still that every time I put my camera on, I get dropped off or the sound doesn't work any longer. So I will be keeping the camera off for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Any other visitors? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the August 18th, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second? Any discussion? Uh, should we do the roll call again, Mary? Would that be easier?
Yes. So Tim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mark?
Uh, abstaining. I wasn't here. Wasn't at the meeting.
Carol?
Yes.
Christine?
And I apologize, I couldn't quite hear that. Was that for the last meeting?
Yes, the minute.
The special meeting, the just a regular, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number four, which there really isn't one. So item number four is appointments and reappointments, and we do not have any of those at this meeting today. So we will move on to item number five, which is authorizing a resolution in support of a historic preservation enhancement grant. Carl, he is not on yet. So we would need him to, just wanted him to speak on behalf of this to let us, give us an oversight on what this grant was for.
I'm here representing the grant.
Chris, can I make a motion to move the agenda item?
Okay, we can move that down to after number, after number six, let's say.
Okay. You think that'll be enough time?
He's just logging on now.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll make a motion to move agenda item five below agenda item number six.
Okay.
Second?
On favor? All right. All right, so we'll move on to item number six right now, which is scheduled for a public hearing for the following ordinances. Uh, there's three of them. We'll have the blight ordinance, the fire marshal ordinance, and the planning and zoning fees. Um, if everybody's into an agreement, we can actually do this at the evening meeting in October, after our regular meeting. We can hold a public hearing for these three items. If everybody's in agreement for that, we can get a motion, we can schedule that public hearing for that evening.
It, uh, Chris, may I ask, it has to wait till October? That's another six weeks away.
The issue is, is October, the first meeting would be in the morning, and it'd be difficult to have a public hearing in the morning.
We couldn't do this in two weeks in September? It needs more time to post than that?
Uh, you would need a couple of weeks to post, but I mean, if you wanted to do it earlier than that, certainly we can have that discussion.
Because some of these things have been hanging around for a while, like the planning and zoning fees and the fire marshal ordinance. If, if it meets with the timing of the notification of the public hearing, I thought, I don't see why we don't do it in September.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Mary, what date would that be kind of put us around for, if we did it at the end of September?
September 22nd. Uh, no, actually, it went in the paper on, yeah, the 22nd.
So it would be the 20th, okay.
That would work as far as posting it legally, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, good. I make a motion, we have the public hearing on September 22nd.
Second?
Well, that's, that's a special meeting then, right? Because that's not going to coincide with our meeting.
Correct.
Oh, I'm, no, no, I'm sorry. I was thinking that would be our next meeting.
That would be the public hearing. That would be just the public hearing.
No, we probably should go into October then.
Okay, I agree. I agree. I thought it was our second meeting. Never mind.
Mary, what's our second meeting in October?
The 15th.
Of October?
Yes.
Your second meeting in October is the 20th.
Okay. I would make a motion that we, uh, hold the public hearing on October 20th, after our regular meeting.
Second.
It would actually be before, the public hearing would be at 6.
I'll amend it to before our meeting.
Yeah? Did you second that originally?
Second, yep.
All right, so any other further discussion to set the public hearing date as October 20th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.? On favor?
Aye.
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 In opposition? Abstaining? All right, thank you. The net is set. All right, we will now then circle back to item number originally five, which is the authorizing the resolutions in support of the historic preservation enhancement grant. Carl, if you can want to just give the council a little bit overview on what this is for.
I wouldn't want to step in on Peggy, since she clearly is going to be the quarterback on this project and has had conversations with the state historic preservation office. So Peggy, you want to speak to the grant?
Yes, I'm here representing the historic district commission on this. Clinton is a certified local government, which as such is eligible for non-matching grants through the state historic preservation office, also known as SHIPO. Present day, Clinton has an amazing number of 17th, 18th, and 19th century buildings that are still standing, which are currently listed in the United States Department of Interiors, Department of Parks, National Register of Historic Places. The town's Clinton Village Historic District, established under the National Historic Registration Act in 1994, is comprised of 144 contributing buildings, two structures, two sites, six objects, per total of 154 resources. These resources can be found on Cemetery Road, Church Street, East Main Street, Liberty Street, Old Post Road, and Waterside Lane. Clinton's High Street, John Street Historic District was authenticated 26 years later, adding another 89 contributing buildings, giving the small town a total of almost 250. It is Commerce Street and the adjacent Lefingwell, for which the town of Clinton now seeks status as a national registered district. Commerce Street has 24 properties that were built in the 1800s, and Lefingwell's 1920s homes were built on order from the Sears catalog. Four Corners, also merely known as the Corners, is a place where east meets west in Clinton, for it is here where East Main Street, West Main Street, Commerce Street, and Post Office Square converge. Commerce Street, originally named Wharf Lane, was first laid out in 1814 to facilitate access to the shipyards. Commerce Street today starts at the Boston Post Road and runs southward, ending at Clinton Harbor. Back in the days of the hominosa plantation, which is now known as Clinton, its southern end was the general location of where Native Americans lived in proximity to the 1663 land-grant settlers. For although those settlers believed that legal title to the property had been granted to them by the general court at Hartford in 1669, they purchased the land from the Indians that lived there as well. The tribal chief sold the settlers all but six acres of land within the town that had been laid out for them. The tribe continued to live there over the years, and one by one, they died. The land which they inhabited eventually came to be known as Indian Acres and is adjacent to Commerce Street. Clinton's post office, built in 1936, replaced the gabled building that once serviced the town and is on the southwest corner of West Main, AKA the Boston Post Road, and Commerce Street. And the Methodist church, along with dozens of other buildings built in the 1800s, a number of marinas and lobster landing at its southernmost end are situated on Commerce Street as well.
Excuse me, Peggy, how long is this, um, is this that you're going to read to us? Because really, we're looking for information on what the grant is.
Well, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Okay? Number of marinas and lobster landing at its southernmost end are situated on Commerce Street as well, making this an adjacent Lefingwell prime candidates for national register recognition. The initial part of the, of the SHIPO grant application process requires that a resolution be introduced to the town council. Once you have approved the resolution that is attached to today's agenda, the grant application process can move forward. Now, are there any questions?
What's the grant?
Um, we're, the grant is to make.
It's a $20,000 grant from the state office of historic preservation that would pay for consultants to help document the resources in a proposed historic district, Commerce and Lefingwell. That would then go forward to be a naturally recognized historic district as the other historic districts are in town.
Uh, would those be the historic districts around Liberty Green or on High Street?
The Clinton Village Historic District, which was the first national registered district, runs from the Indian River up to Route 145 down.
Peggy, I'm asking if, I know there are different designations for the historic district around.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm explaining to you, Carol.
Well, can we just get to the point? Yes or no? I mean, historic, are they Liberty Green or are they High Street?
The Liberty Green Historic District is a local historic district. It is a part of a national historic district, but is different from a national historic district. This is the same as High Street, John Street, and the Clinton villages, and the Clinton Village Historic District. This would be our third national registered district. We already have two.
Have you consulted the residents in this area as to whether this is something they want to see in place or not?
The consultant that gets hired under this grant is the one who does that.
But to get the grant, we have to recognize that this is a national historic district.
The grant is what leads us up to being able to be approved as a national registered district.
I would like input from the residents of that area to know whether they would like to move forward with this. Because they, I, at least for, in the interest of clarity, because a lot of people are fearful of becoming part of a designated area like that, because they feel as though it might impede the things that they like to do or want to do with their own houses.
That is only in a local historic district, Carol. That is only in a local historic district. This is what the Liberty Green Historic District is.
I think enacting something on two streets like that without the knowledge of the people that live on those streets is premature.
But, no.
That's my opinion.
Okay. What I'm trying to explain is the way the process works. First, the resolution gets, if it gets passed, then the grant application, the grant process can move, application process can move forward. Once the grant application has been approved, then the town hires a consultant. The consultant then is the one who organizes and meets with the residents and discusses it with them. And that's the way the procedure works for the state of Connecticut and the national register. And that's how.
This is Christine, this, this is Christine Gupiel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for clarity on this, um, this does not impede or force anybody in that district to comply with any specific renovations and/or criteria when they're making upgrades to their property. What it does do is it allows those residents to apply for low-interest loans and grants for their property, because they do fall within that designation if they want to make improvements that do maintain a historical component.
And what if the improvements do not meet a historical criteria?
And you're not getting money.
And they can't apply for a grant of their own.
That's true. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, there's, I'm looking at the grant. It doesn't specify that this one is going to be used to get a consultant.
What you're looking at is not the grant. That's the resolution that has to be approved and sent to the state's historic preservation office in order for us to apply for the grant. That's not the grant application, Dennis. That's the resolution, the certified resolution that, that the U.S. government and SHIPO require to precede the grant application.
It aligns with the charter requirement that grants be approved before application. That your application is going to be a bit more lengthy documenting the resources in the historic district as well as additional documentation that rounds out the ability of the state to make a decision. Use these federal dollars to give Clinton money for consultants.
All right, because I agree with Carol. I, I certainly wouldn't want to put, uh, on the people that live on those two streets without a little input from those neighbors. But if does, if this resolution doesn't do any type of restrictions on those people at this time, I guess I'd be in favor of the resolution.
Who hires the consultant? If the grants, if we receive the grant?
It's a state, the state is passing through federal funds, so the town would have to issue an RFP in order to hire a consultant. Our state procurement rules will have to follow.
We can send out up to three, so that we, we can send out a solicitation to three consultants for, for them to submit, um, their perspectives.
That's different than putting something out. So you're choosing three, or we're putting out for a proposal for? Those are two different things.
Because the grant, because the grant is no more than $20,000, it does not have to be advertised in, in the newspaper or anywhere else.
So who's going to choose those three, those three companies?
I would like Carl to participate. Carl and I have been working on this together, so Carl would be.
We, we just started working on it yesterday. Uh, so the procurement rules speak to the town issuing a request for proposals once the grant agreement is actually executed. So that would be after the resolution, after we compile an application, send it off to the state, the state agrees to fund us, and we sign the grant agreement to get going. So we have to issue a, it says, a request for proposals must be submitted to SHIPO for review and approval. Proposals received must be submitted to SHIPO for review and approval before a consultant is chosen. Contract between the grantee, the, the town and the contractor must be submitted to SHIPO for review and approval before executed. So while the town may be taking the point on it, the state historic preservation office is going to be checking in at each and every step along the process.
Anybody else? It just seems like, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts here, so it's just a little confusing as just making sure everybody's clear on kind of how this process works, who's going to be involved in it, who's going to be, you know, the lead, and who's going to also have some involvement here. Because then, like everybody states, it's important that if we know that we're getting this grant, it's a $20,000 grant, we're going to get a consultant, you know, we need to make sure and, and, you know, stay on point, that making sure that the individuals that do live in these areas are contacted and do have a voice. And, and, you know, and we do hear from those individuals as far as what, how they feel about that. Because, you know, it, it is in a district then that they would be living, that when they purchase their home, that it isn't in existence. So, you know, my concern as well is just making sure that everything is in place, so everybody has a say and everybody's being notified, uh, so that, you know, transparency i- exists is the most important thing.
That is part of the process and part of the consultant's job, of the job of the consultant that gets hired.
And that's, that's all, the only reason why I want to know who is hiring the consultant and who's staying on track with the consultant and, and, you know, what, what sort of, you know, parameters are in place that we make sure that it stays on, on its focus. So that's why I had that question, I would, you know, who is engaging into this, uh, these individuals, so. Anybody else? All right, then, at this point, then, we would just look to see if someone has a motion, authorizing the resolution in support of a historic preservation enhancement grant.
So move.
Is that Christine? Okay. Second?
Yes.
Any other further discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call then at this time.
Tim?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Carol?
No.
All right. Thank you. And we'll now move on then to the council discussion on future projects. And one of the items that we, I guess we need to discuss, and I guess, uh, is the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget workshop. I don't know if that's something that we should be discussing as far as setting up some budget workshops at this point, so that we have some target dates in place. Is that something, Carl, that you think you should be doing at this point?
Uh, so the actual workshops, when we're reviewing the budget, take place after I've submitted it to you, so that would be rolling out in, in February. Uh, I think there was expressed interest in having a conversation before the budget season starts with what the council's direction is, what your goals and objectives were. We had spoken earlier about trying to engage with the Board of Education, um, much earlier in the process where they're getting ready for their, um, budget, um, development. So their, the board of ed will be gearing up their budget development process, and if you want to engage and start trying to lay out broad stroke of where you see the budget going, um, now is the time to start that conversation with the board of ed, and then if there's any specific input or parameters you want into the town's budget, um, it's always better to have that before I actually present to you, to make sure that if you've got things that are a priority and that is the council's consensus, then it can try to work it in, rather than doing it on the last day, right before it goes out to the public.
So would you be looking to set up a workshop date?
Uh, I think if you want to have that conversation, it would be having a meeting sort of rather than later. I know it's, it was a challenge trying to do something last month on ARPO, and we have a continued conversation needs to take place on that. So this would be yet another forum, and we'd have to coordinate with, uh, superintendent and the board of ed for their timing, if you're looking to have the board of ed participate in the process also.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, I'm feeling that we, as the council, need to provide guidance to, or, or provide input, not necessarily guidance, but input to the town manager as, and to the board of ed. We're not, this is not discussion time. This is agreement time on the part of the council as to what we would like to see move forward with the budget. Um, in the past, we are given the budgets and we're told, oh, you can fool with it then, uh, rather than, than creating a pathway for the departments in town to follow. What I'm looking for is the opportunity to create that pathway. Um, I don't, my personal opinion is that I would not want the board of ed to, I would not require or request the board of ed to come to meetings such as that. Of course, they're, you know, if they want to be there and, and, and listen in, that's fine, but I'm not looking for their input at this point. Um, I have found in the many years I've been on this board, that the tail wags the dog. And, um, with this new form of government, we are the dog and we, by setting policy or precedent or, or expectations, can wag the tail for once. So I, my, my goal in having a meeting of this type is to, um, lay out standards that we would like the departments to, departments being, the board of ed being one of those departments, that we would like them to adhere to or respect. Um, so I, I see this as an opportunity for the council to speak freely to each other as to what they're, they're, um, what they would like to see with the budget going forward.
Thanks, Carol. Anybody else? So I mean, hearing that is, are we open to maybe doing something and setting up something for the month of October to start these discussions?
Well, I, to me, the sooner the better. The sooner the, I know we have that meeting next week on Wednesday. Would it be possible to perhaps meet earlier on the 15th, which is our next evening meeting, and maybe have this workshop before that, uh, council meeting? Maybe meet at like 5:30 or 5 o'clock before the 7 o'clock meeting? I'm, I'm just, I just want to get this ball rolling. I've been asking about this since June, I think. And the clock is ticking, and you know the board of ed has been working on next year's budget since the last one was passed. So I think the sooner we can get our input in place or our, our thinking in place, the better. That's my opinion. I mean, you wait till October, they're going to be two-thirds of the way through, and they are our biggest cost driver, our biggest cost center.
Anyone else? I mean, if you want, I mean, we can certainly do that. I mean, if you're interested in setting up a meeting for September, we need, you know, again, we need everybody's input, you know.
It's like September.
Well, this could be a long meeting, so having it the night of another meeting, I don't think makes sense. I think it has to be separate meeting, so that way we're not restricted and looking over our shoulder whether we're on time or not. So I would make the recommendation that it be just a separate meeting, and that way we can take whatever time we need to resolve it.
Okay.
Yeah. I like that too. Go on the 22nd, that's the following Wednesday.
That's fine. That's fine. I just don't want to wait another month.
Okay. Then maybe we can just have Mary put on an email, 9:22, a time, and then we can sit there and let everybody confirm that they, that they can make that meeting. That works?
Works pretty.
All right. So then we'll look at a 9:22 meeting for a budget workshop. Um, any other discussions on any future projects at this time?
Is there, is there any forward moving on the fire, um, the request from the fire department?
That's going to come up in Carl's manager's report. He does adjutant's manager's report, so wait for that. Anybody else? All right. Hearing that, we'll move on then to number eight, which is the chairman's report. Uh, just two things that I want to address quickly. First of all, thank everybody, uh, for everybody's involvement in the fireworks this past Saturday. Um, it once again was a great event for our town to see everybody out and getting together. Um, and, you know, thanking all the people that did the back work for it to make sure that this goes off, uh, without a hitch every year. So, uh, it was good to have it back. Thanking everybody, Chamber of Commerce, obviously, and everybody who donated, Andy Randy, who put the fireworks show on, you know, a big thank you to all of them for all the help that, uh, they provided to make sure that this went off. Um, and then just the second thing is to thank Mike Neff and the work that he does. A lot of people don't see it. He doesn't want to hear his name out there in public. Um, he hates hearing his name, um, but he deserves a big thank you. Uh, this last storm that we went through, that everybody was so upset that, uh, you know, we didn't lose power for days and, uh, you know, didn't have floods and, you know, we're so upset about it. Um, the fact is that Mike puts in a lot of work, the backside, a lot of effort that he does in planning and putting together with the DPW, police department, fire department, you know, the first responders, the, the work he does is crazy. Um, and it's essentially around the clock. So just wanted to thank him for making sure that the town's prepared, shouldn't have then happened. Um, obviously. Um, obviously, I'm thankful, I'm assuming most people are thankful that it didn't turn into what we thought it was going to turn into. Um, but just again, a thank you to know that we do appreciate all the work that he does put in and everybody else along with him, in order to make sure that we are prepared in the event something does happen. That is it for me, we will move on to Carl's town manager's report.
Uh, so you have the written report, to Carol's question, following up on the fire department report, I did have a, a meeting with Mike Neff and Ryan Manware to discuss the report that was presented to the council and facilitated a conversation about what the next steps would be. So we were both trying to, all three of us were trying to lay out what a logical roadmap would be, what the next steps are, and what additional information might need to be put together for the council. We're still in the process of getting that information. Once we have that, there'll probably be another request for a workshop to walk the council through some of the concepts of what the next steps are, uh, if there's consensus to move forward with the project. Uh, so we'll, once we're, once we're ready to, to interface with the council, we'll, we'll certainly reach out through Mary and see what people's availability is to lay out the next steps. Now that you've got their, their report on the conditions of the existing, existing headquarters. Uh, also on the grant front, in addition to now working with Peggy on the historic grant, moving forward on the ship grant, which was for our management plan update. Uh, I have a draft RFP that I put together already to solicit for consultants to update the report or update the plan. Waiting for feedback now from the Harvard Management Commission, if there's any priorities or top-of-mind issues that they want to have flagged for the consultant early on. State statute pretty much derives what this whole work for one of these things is, but if there are specific issues that we want to raise as a higher profile, then that would be the time to get that, so once I hear back from Dave Adams, be able to put that out in the street. I made a brief mention in the written report on the regional housing plan, this is being done through the COT. Uh, it satisfies state mandate that every town have a fourth housing plan in place. So we're participating through the COT. It'll, it'll mirror the process that was put in place for the natural hazards mitigation plan. Basically, it'd be a regional review of housing needs and what the individual dynamics are in the COT region, and then separate annex reflecting the town's feelings, the town's goals, and objectives for itself. And then, just like NRCS or National Hazard Mitigation Study, the town council would then have to adopt the Clinton housing annex part of it. And that we have to report that up to the state, as every town is supposed to have one of these in place by June of next year. Calendar for moving the project forward was reviewed last night. A lot of that local work and meetings with the towns would be moving into sort of the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. While they're putting together their data now, starting their community outreach later in this month. Uh, and looking at best practices. One positive note is that Clinton, they, they do have a survey out, uh, which I did send to the council via email. It's also been on our social media, and the library has been helping promoting it. Uh, Clinton has the highest response rate on any of the towns in the COT region. So that's positive in terms of community engagement around the issue. It's about three hundred responses, and, and Clinton represents the lion's share of that response. The survey will remain that open for another two weeks at this point, with the hope of additional community feedback and that the other participating towns get more, more people participating via survey, more people that participate, easier it is to do cross-tabulation for the town-specific interests and the town-specific understanding of what constitutes affordable housing. Um, ultimately, this will march through until the spring of twenty twenty-two, uh, working through local meetings and further discussions at each town's level, tee out for that June twenty twenty-two. Finish date, so we can report to OPM, and then we have our, our plan in place as we are mandated to by state. And if there's any questions on the written report, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Anyone? Alright, all good? Thank you, Carl. We will now move on to number ten, which is the town council committee liaison report. Uh, does anybody have anything to report at this time? I know Erica, I know Erica's our big one, he's not here today because he has school, so that's why he missed our meeting today. So nobody else on any committee of the reports? Alright. You're none of them, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Stumbled.
Second? Discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, thank you. Have a good day, everyone, thanks again.
And you, Mr. Chairman.
This conference is no longer being recorded.